All right, so we'll kick this off here. Welcome to the June 23 meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of zoning ordinance for hardship variances, special uses, and appeals. I'm Dan Darlin, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Members present today are, from your left to right, Bridget Boyd Carlson, Vice Chair, myself, Tom Quinn, and Angela Layback. Staff present are Scott Copes, Matt Waterich, and Attorney Mallory Bagby. If you have mobile devices, please turn it off, as it may interfere with the room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone here will conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the Chair. The only exception to this standard is that the staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure that we are properly conducting our business. If anyone wishes to speak on particular agenda item, you'll be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. By practice, each person is only permitted one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice is at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they will be permitted to speak to answer that question, but I'll ask that you keep your response limited to that specific question. So, the first order... Okay, minutes. Any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion passes. First order of business today is request HV2205 of Tammy Spital on behalf of Youth Justice and Rehabilitation Center for Hardship Variants at 4715 Tremont Avenue to reduce parking ... skip the line, to reduce parking requirements for government official or office or facility. Table 17.10-2 requires one parking space for every 500 square feet of gross floor area. The site will provide 76 parking spaces for the 59,025-square-foot facility. The government office rate is the closest related use to the proposed use. The zoning code does not have a specific parking rate for youth detention facilities. Is the applicant here? Excellent. May I have the staff report, please?
Scott Copes, Department of Development and Neighborhood Services. As stated in the description of this request, our zoning ordinance doesn't have a specific rate requirement for a youth home like this. So, that is why we're here today. The office portion of the project is going to meet our required rate for parking, and then there's been a formula proposed by the applicant, which the staff has accepted and recognized as acceptable. This first slide just kind of shows you where the location is. Scott County has a facility located next to the call center and out by Public Works. So, the purpose is here, you know, is to reduce the parking because we don't have that code section. The site will provide 46 parking spaces for the 59,025-square-foot facility, which will have 60 beds, and that's after both Phase 1 and Phase 2 would be completed. We're here today, and we're gonna run the Phase 2 numbers through so that they don't have to come back later on when Phase 2 is completed. So, the new facility will be two stories. The first floor is where the beds will be located, and the second floor will be office space for meeting with clients and attorneys and things of that nature. As I said, 54 spaces will meet the parking demand for the 20 full-time equivalent staff serving on the 60-bed facility. There are going to be four ADA parking space requirement provided, and all ADA requirements will be met. This is just an overhead shot of the same lot that we had earlier. You can see to the south is where Public Works has their fuel station, and then further south of that is the 911 call center. The plan calls for demolition of the front two buildings, and there's a rear storage building which will remain, and so the project is gonna be, for the most part, on the first two-thirds of the lot, and that rear one-third will not be utilized. So, this is just kind of what the building elevation looks like, and below they have the parking demand calculation that they came up with. So, the full-time equivalent of 20 people, plus the shift change when there's an overlap of 20 persons, plus the scheduled legal appointments, which two available rooms are, and that would be equivalent to four cars, plus scheduled family visiting appointments, which they're in control of, would be two rooms available for six cars. And so, the total needs for the bed facility would be 50 spaces, and then if you add that to the 22 spaces needed for the office portion, the second floor of this building, that would generate a parking demand of 72 spaces needed. They also add on the four ADA spaces for a total of 76 spaces provided. And so, here's the site plan. There's parking that's going to be on the west side of the lot in front of the building, which would be along Tremont, and there's also parking on the side yard, which would be to the south and which would face the call center. And then, I guess, again here, you can see the white building towards the east is the building that's going to remain, that's already present right now. We did notify property owners within 200 feet. We have not received any calls or comments. As far as the approval standards are concerned, the proposed parking shall meet more than ... shall be more than sufficient. Youth housed in this facility are transported to this location by law enforcement and do not require parking specifically for themselves. Physical conditions of the site do limit the use. Minimal areas are available for parking. Staff supports the parking reduction due to the detrimental impact of stormwater runoff. So, staff does it favor having additional spaces that would just be there to create additional runoff. Parking requirements are limited or limit congestion in the street, because that's the reason we have the parking requirements. This said development will not cause congestion in the streets. Character of the area will be protected. The site will have adequate parking spaces for the proposed use, and our findings support those analysis sections. Zoning code does result in a hardship as applied. Physical and topographical conditions of the site do limit the use. Unique circumstance has been established, and essential character has been protected. Staff recommends the board adopt staff's finding and approve HV2205 with a recommendation for approval based on the review of the approval standards and the findings as stated in the staff report. Any questions by the board?
Thanks, Scott. Is that currently the Sheriff's Annex Building? Is that the site we're talking about?
Yes, I think that's what they call that, yeah. The existing facility, yeah.
Right. I knew there'd been some discussions on that, but didn't know that was a done deal, so... All right, any questions from board? Sure.
Just kind of, it seems like not a lot of parking spaces for a facility of this size. It looks like you've done the math, and you're comfortable with... I mean, this is a 50% reduction in what the ordinance would require. So, that's a pretty steep reduction. It's like 45%, just based on gross square footage.
Actually, I don't know that I would call it a 50% reduction. The table in the staff report... The first page of the staff report?
Yep.
I guess it's actually in the technical addendum. It provides, for every 777 square feet of area or square foot in this building, there is one parking space, and the code requires 1 to 500. So, it'd have to be 1 to 1,000 for it to be 50%. It's closer to one-third would be the...
Okay. I just took the 59,000 and added by 500. That's 118 spaces, and we're providing 76. That's roughly a not-quite-50% reduction, but I guess my question would be is if there's an event where more parking is required, it wouldn't seem like it'd be a good idea to have people parking on Tremont, which is a fairly busy road.
Right.
What would the plan be for overflow parking in the event?
We can have the applicant address that.
Yeah.
There is parking available at the City of Davenport Public Works facility that might be potentially used, but I'll let the applicant address that. When staff's doing their report, we didn't... This isn't the type of facility that holds events for people. It's strictly for the youths who are there. They're not chopping this office space out for use by other departments to come hold events or anything like that. So, that's what staff was looking at when we made our analysis.
Great, thanks. Please go up to the podium and give us your name, position, and tell us why you're here.
Sure, I'm Tammy Spital, the Director of Facilities for Scott County. Appreciate your time today. I'm just going to discuss with you here and talk about this facility as a youth justice rehabilitation center, so we'll replace the juvenile detention site that was located down on Port Shu. So, if they answer your question about parking, you know, kids don't drag themselves to detention centers, so they're brought in, so no vehicles are required for them. The total number that includes both spaces, quite honestly, we don't see that third time being added on, maybe even 15 years in the future, and so that's about 8,500 square feet there. The upstairs is going to be an unfinished shell, so we only think we're gonna finish up there for some restrooms or kitchenette area. The rest of it will largely be unused. The thought is at some point, if we had an incident downtown, maybe we would relocate some stuff there. Code is a great example, right? We'll just all be in the same area, and so very rough. We would put up some folding tables and chairs and maybe some staff or whatever. So, there's no plan to do so bad. Now, it's not even going past the office space. It's strictly going to be a shell, and part of it is an alternative, an alternative to the project, so that may not even be... There may not be a Phase 2 repairs, wrong. It doesn't make more sense to build that now when you're closing below home elevator and it's locked off, so that was the thought we came there. We can share space over the 917. See, that's what I'm just saying, Scott County manager's room, and as you mentioned, they've already got a little bit of a... I don't believe it would be hard on Tremont to have a senior board there. We believe this space will be more than adequate. Again, that's 20 staff. That's one of the buildings that is fully built out, and so typically, you probably will be looking for more staff, so 200 staff would be...
Sure. All right, anything else? Questions for the board? No, thanks. All right, board discussion. Sure.
I would like to state that staff's report was based upon the proposed use, and as suggested by legal, a good protection would be adding a condition to the hardship variance if it were to be approved, and the kitchen condition would be that any kind of change in the use would warrant a reevaluation of parking needs at that time.
So, if the lower floor was no longer used solely or mostly for detention facilities, and it required more parking, that it would come back here?
All right, any questions then? Then, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request with the stipulation that if the use of the building changes, that it would require a reevaluation by staff.
All right, so we have a motion to approve HV22-05 with the condition that if there's a change in the use, then it comes back before the CVA. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Carlson, I'm sorry. Quinn?
Yes.
Auntie Layback?
Yes.
And Darlin?
Yes. All right, so that's passed and concluded then. All right, second issue before the board is request HV22-06 of Dan Han on behalf of Amy Pabek at 2208 North Zenith Avenue for a six-foot solid privacy fence in the front yard setback along West Lombard Street. Section 17.09.030.h.2.a limits solid fences within the front or reverse corner side setback to four foot in height and 70% open faces to six foot in height. Is the applicant here? Okay. May I have the staff report, please?
Scott Copes, DNS. This request today is for a fence which is going to be placed in the front yard of the property, and the fence is proposed to be a solid six-foot fence. This diagram here shows where fences can be located on this corner lot. In the yellow area, you can have a four-foot solid fence or a six-foot open fence, which would be 70% open. So, those are the two options for fences in that location. Obviously, you can be less than six feet or less than four feet, but that's the maximum height. In the green area, which is kind of the buildable area of the lot, for the most part, you can have fences that are six-foot tall and solid in that location. So, if the fence were completely located in that green location, we wouldn't be here today, but the fence is proposed to be south of the house, along Lombard, and that triggers the need for the hardship variance. And quickly, this is just our diagram for what a solid fence is versus an open fence. An open fence needs to be 70% of the superficial air surface consisting of regularly distributed openings must be there. A solid fence is one that you cannot see through, or you can only see through less than 70% of. And so, the petitioner yesterday submitted a revised, not really a revised, but a more clear diagram of where the fence is going to be. The previous diagram didn't have the property lines on it, and it had a distance of 153 feet for the lot depth, which is actually 125. So, staff asked the applicant, and they were gracious to show us this new diagram. I will note that at the top of this diagram, let's see if I can find a laser pointer, but there's a seven-foot-five foot easement along the north property line in which it's a drainage and utility easement, and in that location, a fence wouldn't be allowed. This diagram here shows a little bit better. So, we just want to make note that that portion north of the garage there would not be allowed. It would have to be almost flush with the garage to stay out of that easement. And here again is the original diagram, and I've read the difference in the depths. And the other difference was that the front yard to the south, it appeared to be 33 feet on this diagram. In actuality, it's a 30-foot, approximately a 30-foot front yard. So, we've gotten to the purposes of the variance. As I stated, a six-foot tall fence is what they're asking for. It's not permissible by right. A solid fence in the front yard limited to four feet would be allowed by right, or the petitioner could build a six-foot fence, the same height they're proposing, but it would have to be an open fence, the open style I showed earlier. This is the site from Google Street View, and this is the site from Google Street View with a mock-up of what the fence would look like. Staff tried to get this as best could to scale. We erred a little bit on having the fence a little bit shorter than what it is. It's probably about five and a half in some and maybe five in others, but that's just a mock-up of what it would like if the applicant had their hardship variance granted. This difference here is showing what a 70% open fence would look like. It changes the character of the neighborhood considerably when it's an open fence. Staff did do notices to all property owners within 200 feet. We have not received any written comments, but we did receive three telephone calls. Two of them were asking informational questions, and one indicated they might be here today to have comments. Staff, approval standards in our analysis, a fence can be built in the front yard. However, the petitioner wishes it to be built at a height and a style not allowed by the zoning code, and this is really a self-created hardship. There's no support for the variance. Number two, physical conditions of the site do not limit the use of the property. There are areas available for fencing, both at a six-foot height and a four-foot height with varying styles. Number three, there's no unique circumstance on this property that prohibits construction of a fence in compliance with requirements. It's a straightforward flat lot. There's no topographic conditions or creeks or other natural areas that prohibit this use of this property in a reasonable manner. And number four, character of the area will be altered by the fortress-like effect a solid six-foot fence, privacy fence would have. Staff's findings, the zoning code does not result in a hardship as applied. Physical and topographical conditions of the site do not limit the use. Unique circumstance has not been established, and essential character would be impacted. Staff's recommendation accordingly, then, is that staff recommends denial of HV2206 as a request does not meet approval standards for hardship variance.
Could you go back to the, I guess, the revised diagram? There we go. So, the black line is the fence?
Correct.
Proposed, okay. And south is the side of the house?
So, on the south there, the sidewalk is approximately two feet from the property line. That black line on the south is up to the property line, and the black line on the west or the left side goes up to the property line there as well. The portion north of the garage, that's the portion that will have to be changed and modified. It cannot be in a drainage way, so it would be... They could have a fence approximately even with the garage on the north wall of the garage.
All right, and then the house faces Zenith?
Right, the front of the house faces Zenith, even though the zoning code considers the Lombard Street to be the front yard.
Right.
Scott, the red dotted lines, are those the... Is that the drainage area?
Correct. The red dash line is the easement lines, yep, and that's shown a little bit better on this one here.
So, that's what you meant when you said that it would have to stay basically on the edge of the...
Correct, yeah, so from that north wall, that garage, north to their property line is an easement area in which buildings and fences and other structures cannot be built.
So, maybe it's a little off. Can you go back to that view? So, in the third lot, is there a structure in there?
That's correct. It looks like there's an accessory shed in there, and that's one of the items that wouldn't be allowed, and so when it's a drainage easement, it's a little bit different than like a utility easement. Drainage easements, we like to make sure that there's a open because the water needs a place to flow. Sometimes, utility companies might grant a waiver to an easement with the exception that if they have to come in and do any work in their easement, and if there's any personal property in there, like fences or sheds, they would remove them, and if they get damaged, it's at the expense of the owner to put them, you know, to replace them, et cetera. But that's always in agreement with each specific utility provider. The drainage easement is with the city, and the city's hard and fast when it comes to not having structures in the drainage way.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Negative, all right. Applicant, you can... Yeah, applicant, go ahead and step up. Name, please. Okay. And that was a conversation with the utility company, not with...
No, it was a... Our company. I called in to discuss, and some answers from other sources were there, I'm telling you. And so, I'm thinking, I'm not supposed to have to do some personal consideration.
Okay.
That was a hardship, you know, on the south side. Especially the reason there to try and bring new social nets to the property as a state of their, the order property, she is now becoming a big mom, her husband, you know, as well as the hardship she has, has heart attack, has a massive brain injury from it. I would say that in this year property, it could be cured, but that's why we're looking for the sense of privacy, it would be more than a security. We didn't have no more support, you know, there's a test of reinforcement, it's a 20 or 18, and our box, that is brought to us, I know that they have given it on Lombard, but then, that was helping, I have it to be on Lombard, so it's not a problem. We just want to go further than garage on the left, and we have got the garage doors and all that there, and then, we have to stay in the house on the right of Lombard.
So, the purpose of the fence is just for security, it's not for a dog or something? Okay.
There's a joke, my head, people popping outside, and on the exterior, when you reach out there, and I'm trying to kind of hear voices, you get outside, it's kind of hard, I know there's, I know there are folks in my garden, people walk down, walk down, they're just trying to hear what's in there, and here you are, if you want them, but, you know, at least when the structure is installed up, you have an open structure, you can still put a foot in, climb in, jump over, you can have to...
Okay.
I'm focused here, and, you know, guys giving up, kind of the thought, I'm not really want to do this, and, 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 and,
Mister? Mister Hun?
Yeah, come on.
The microphone won't pick you up unless you're at the podium because it's that square right above you. Thank you.
So southeast corner of the garage, the northeast corner of the house. Okay, got it. Okay. Questions at the board to applicant?
Where does, is the front door face Zenith?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
So, I mean, this might be a question for Scott. The main, the main gist of this is that small section of fence along the south property line, that's really where, is that really kind of the main concern here?
Yeah, the one that has the shaded area. Can you go to that? There you go.
So you'd have to, to put a fence on the south side, you'd have to move that fence back almost twenty-five feet?
Correct, the fence in the yellow area, either along Zenith or along Lombard, would have to be a four-foot open fence or a six-foot, I'm sorry, a six-foot open fence or a four-foot tall solid fence. Either yard is the same restriction, whether it's along Zenith or along Lombard, that there's the same restriction as far as the...
Can you explain for us how the, the side yard on the corner is considered like a front yard?
Right, so the code applies to the front yard and a corner side yard. So what's, the area along Zenith is actually called the corner side yard by zoning definition, but it has the same restriction as the front yard.
So Zenith is the front, but the Lombard is the corner side yard?
Lombard's the front, I should say, and then Zenith is the corner side yard.
Could you go back to the site plan?
Yeah, I said it backwards, so, I'm sorry about that.
It's address on Zenith.
Yeah, the Zenith is the corner side yard and Lombard is the front yard.
No.
That's what it is. The front yard by definition is the least frontage. So the least frontage is Lombard. That makes the south lot line the front yard.
So even though the house faces Zenith?
Correct, it's not based on Zenith. The zoning ordinance bases the front yard based on the lot, not on how a builder will build a house because we don't know how they may or may not build houses when lots are set out.
So the shorter, the shorter of the two is automatically the front?
Correct, and the rear is the opposite of the front.
Got it.
Could you go back to the site plan that shows the location of the fence then?
There.
So there really is no fence line along Zenith because it terminates at the corner of the house there. So really, the big, the big issue is the short section of fence along the south side there along Lombard. That would have to be moved up near the house.
The portion that needs the hardship variance is all completely south of the dwelling. That's correct.
So the piece that parallels Lombard, as well as the two perpendicular to that would have to be shortened up as well? Okay. Any more questions for the applicant, or any questions for the applicant? All right.
I guess, I mean, would you entertain, rather than all the way out to the sidewalk, would you entertain a compromise moving it closer to the home, you know? I guess that'd just be a question, is that would be something that you might, you might consider?
So, has there been crime in that area? Has your, the person that owns this home, has she checked with the police department and see how many, you know, calls have been in that area and that kind of thing? Yep.
Just for clarification, staff did specifically ask for that piece of evidence, and the applicant wasn't able to provide anything.
Okay.
My quick question is, so besides the variance to be able to build into what they consider the drainage area, are you also asking to have it taller than what's allowed there? Is that what you're asking for? Because I'm confused.
The north side isn't before you today to make a determination?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Building a drainage easement, would it be within your authority?
Okay, that's, that's what I was questioning. I have a question for Scott. So, the, so he wants six foot because he says it's taller. So could you do a four-foot solid and then like the open on top? Like the two, extra two feet of open fencing, or is that not...
If the solid fencing is no taller than four feet, yes, there could be a open, seventy percent open fence above there, that's correct.
Have you thought about that? Well, seems to me that would give you, well, your concern is if it's four feet...
Apparently, I'm incorrect.
Oh, you are, okay, sorry.
So, in order to do the six-foot fence, it's seventy percent open, it has to be completely open.
Well, yeah, the entire six-foot surface area would have to be seventy percent open.
Right.
With the lower four foot being solid than it would be. So, yeah. Okay. It's a thought. All right, any other questions of board to applicants? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the request? Come on up. But, excuse me, come on up to the podium and then give us your name. Okay. We don't have that authority to modify the ordinance.
I think he means modify the request.
Oh. Would that be a separate request?
A modified request would have to come back before this board, and we'd have to have a chance to evaluate what the changed request was. We can't do it at this meeting.
Yeah, that's a concern. Right. All right. Yeah, I mean, that's not... Yeah, appreciate your comments. All right, anyone in the audience wish to speak in opposition to the request? All right. Applicants, any final comments? Okay. We have that there because sometimes there's multiple people who speak, and then you want to be able to address something, but, okay, discussion.
Your microphone's not on.
I'm looking at that picture, I mean, it does, that fence kind of sticks out like sore thumb, so...
Well, there's, yeah, there's that, and I also think from a traffic obstruction, a visibility would be a concern.
I mean, I feel bad that the applicant doesn't feel, or the homeowner doesn't feel safe in her own home. But, you know.
Well, six-foot open fence is still an option and would work, would address all of our concerns. So I do, I do agree with staff that that's probably not the best solution for that corner.
Right. And if security is the concern, is a six-foot fence up at the appropriate line less secure than a six-foot fence at a distance from the line? You know, so... So it could still provide the security, which was why I asked what the purpose of, if it's a dog or, you know, whatever. All right, any other discussion? So this, go ahead. Oh, okay. So the recommendation is that this did not meet the hardship variance. So staff has recommended to deny it, but at this point, I would entertain a motion.
Just, just to confirm, there'd be a motion, we would, we motioned in the affirmative?
We motioned to the affirmative, yes.
Correct. So I'd make a motion to approve the request.
So a motion to approve request HV two-two dash zero six, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Leibert?
So just to clarify, a yes would be to go with the staff report?
No.
No, okay, so, no.
Yeah, the request is, is held up then. So just to clarify things. So we have, we have a motion, a second, so we can have discussion. The, the request is to build a six-foot fence right up against the sidewalk as was shown in the picture, so that's the request. The motion's been made to approve that, so voting yes to prove it, or no to not approve that.
So, no for me.
Boyd Carlton?
No.
Quinn?
No.
And Darlin? No. So, so I'm sorry, did not pass, so you can look at other options and bring them back if it gets into that situation. Thank you. No other business, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thanks, everyone.